Good morning, everybody. Welcome to staff meeting Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Few things we'll be discussing today. Welcome, everybody that's here to take part. Do we have anybody on Zoom loading them up? Nobody on Zoom. Okay. Uh, yeah, I wanted to announce real quick briefly that Commissioner Lopez, she is committed to mission Wichita today. And so this was a previous commitment that she had and and uh, she's knee deep in that and it's good business. So we're excited that she's taking part in that program. She won't be with us this morning. She'll catch up uh on Zoom a little later. That being said, Mr. Stoltz, take it away.
All right, we have two items today, and then I'm going to spend a little bit of time at the end just talking about the on block on Thursday. Uh, the two items for discussion are our final look at federal platform. The commission has no more questions. We'll put that on a BOCC meeting for formal vote. And then Sheena is here to give an update on parental leave. It's been how long now? Six months. So this is a six month update uh on parental leave, how it's going, and she has a presentation ready for that. But we'll start off with Tanya on uh federal agenda.
Okay, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, before you, you should have a draft of the 2024 federal agenda. And if you recall, I think it was about a month ago, we had Jim Gavin Port via Zoom and went through uh the draft of the federal agenda. Not much has changed. I've gone through and made uh some minor edits based on some feedback. And I'm happy to walk through uh the agenda and I've got Lynn here who uh has a has a majority of some of the requests. Um, but you just told me how you want to walk through the agenda and I'll go from there.
Smart. Take it.
You'll do that.
My step. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. You guys go with that.
Okay, so uh, the first items are congressionally directed spending requests, and we've got two here, and I think that um we've kind of taken a different approach this year. Um, understanding that there is limited uh funding for earmarks. Uh, we only added two, and so those two items are ARC 95 and then our project, uh, which is the Emergency Operations Center or the, actually, I think we we are now calling it the Emergency uh Preparedness uh Warehouse. So those are the two items that we have designated for the congressionally directed spending requests. And uh Commissioner Meister, I might lean on you just a little bit on this because I know that uh you and Commissioner Lopez recently had a meeting with Senator Moran and his staff, and I don't know if you want to add anything um regarding these two projects.
Yeah, we presented them and and actually showed them the balance of other things plus the balance of uh. We showed him the updated uh, the most recent uh KDOT report that came out that showed, because he's the US Senator for the whole state of Kansas, we showed him the uh most recent KDOT report that came out was the summary of all of the projects region wise. So uh they're appreciative of seeing that. They had not seen that yet or but uh on the road project. But then uh as a result of that, uh, they also uh they had two people that uh wanted further follow up, which we did have a Zoom call about four days later. Ironically, uh, when Commissioner Lopez and I was there, um, we were there on a Monday to for a Tuesday. And the cutoff for Senator Moran's congressionally directed spending uh was deadline was Friday. And so they were really appreciative that that we got in under the wire because they're basically telling others that, but now uh, if anybody comes to them, it's it's past the deadline. Um, anyway, we had a further detail um um Zoom meeting of which uh Lynn was able to join us on the explanation of where we're at in the history of ARC 95. And also then we uh, we had Rusty was there to help uh confirm the uh operating uh, the uh public set to warehouse.
When was that called again?
Anyway, so uh they have a lot more uh details. Uh, the call Lynn was there. I think, Tom, you were there. It was very uh seemed to be well received, and I think they were putting it in the funnel. Who knows if it makes it to the to the champion uh awards. But uh, that's kind of where where we're at. If that helps explain some.
Any questions on those items? If not, I'll move on. Okay, uh, and then one more thing. We'll just add on the uh Emergency Preparedness Warehouse. Um, we are still applying for the Defense Community Infrastructure Program grant. Um, so that is in the works right now. For that particular grant.
Real quick on that too. That time is coming around again. Uh, application is due in June. Um, there was two pieces to that that we are trying to shore up. One was getting that project more build ready. Uh, and I think Tanya had visited with each of you about, uh, you know, getting some actual architectural work done on that. The second thing was that there we have to enhance the communication with uh McConnell. Uh, it's more than just having them sign a letter for us. They need to be more involved, and so we are going to be working on that uh with the Command out of McCall and commissioners uh to go out and help with that. That will be happening uh
May 30.
Yeah, that that a final meeting there, but anything we can do between now and May 30th to shore that up. But there is a meeting being scheduled for May 30 with Command out there that we've already got on the calendar. So just those are the two things that we have to tangibly work on before we make application in June.
And and Julie has been and continues to work with the Preparedness Group out on the base. So she's got direct she's having direct communication conversations with those folks on this grant issue as well as some other projects that they're jointly combined with. So she's she's actively working that group on base and
Okay, so the next section then are transportation projects, and that's to support funding for county bridge and road projects. So we have three listed. Uh, the first one is the Northwest Wichita Expressway in districts three and four. Uh, the second one is reconstruction of 151st Street West between 53rd Street North and Highway
Don't remember us ever having Northwest Wichita Expressway.
Lynn.
We started with Northwest Expressway.
Oh, did I?
We have uh, it has the original name was the Northwest Wichita Bypass, and then it went to the Northwest uh Expressway. Um, and then we still have paperwork that has the Wichita in it. Um, it's been uh, KDOT still refers to it as the bypass Northwest Wichita Bypass. Um, and uh, so I've seen it in various paperwork both ways.
But until we get Wichita to sign on to it, I don't know why we have Wichita in the name.
Understood.
And that's what I've been calling it. Uh, that's what all of our meetings that we've been having lately call it.
I, yeah, I think a lot of the opposition to this actually was based on the idea it was a bypass. They didn't want people to bypass Wichita. But now it's expressway, and I think we we have a new a new council. We ought to be asking them if they if they would be willing to support this. I think they they very well might at this point.
But Lynn and I met with the mayor and we met with the Councilwoman Tuttle just within the last month. Uh, and there is no support whatsoever out of Wichita for the Northwest Expressway.
So I'll take take that out. Okay. Okay.
You know, on that, on that. Lynn, or can we update that? The the last sentence, construction cost estimate? Recent, is that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Well, the the 519 million cost of the last sentence, I I think updated has been a little bit more than that.
Correct. So uh, that's one of the discussions that Commissioner Dennis and I have had. Um, right now, uh, the the cost they've been talking about is the Northwest. Um, what what was the original project, the Wichita Bypass, which was basically from K96 up at Mays and Wichita all the way down to US 54 and then US 54 all the way out uh from 111th to 215th Street. It was a huge project that they are now quoting to be closer to $1 billion total, but um that West West uh Kellogg is often what the city refers to it is, but West US 54 project is almost a project of its own. Um, and uh, it does connect, and there are benefits to having them, you know, construct relatively close together, but um even the portion that is just from Mays down to Goddard um really is a two to three phase project. Um, and so I think the uh, what need, one of the steps that needs to happen is to really look at a phase to get this started. For example, we've talked about from K96 down to 21st Street, 21st Street being a major corridor in that area. And just concentrate on that cost because a lot of the right of way has already been obtained for that. Um, and therefore would be primed to go as a first phase. And that cost obviously significantly lower.
Well, it's just kind of confusing. This this page doesn't say phases. Doesn't have.
That is correct. That is something we've talked about here in the last month.
I'm okay with whatever it's saying. It just didn't seem to flow. Okay.
Okay, then the second one is reconstruction of 151st Street West between 53rd Street North and Highway K96 in District Three. There being uh reconstruction south half mile of 135th Street West between 53rd and 61st Street Streets North. That is it for the transportation projects. Okay, uh, and then the next item is Amtrak Extension, Support the Extension of Amtrak Services uh from Oklahoma City, Oklahoma to into Newton, Kansas. And so uh, Commissioner Meister, I don't know if you have any comments on this particular item? And then we added the additional sheet just to kind of correspond with this item.
Um, the one pager that you see on page six is pretty much the same, but we've updated oh, bullet number four, because now we are in the uh we are in the uh corridor approval process. We we've been approved, so we took out some of that language to support getting approved. Now that we're just approved um the corridor ID program and then uh adjusted a couple of the bullets in the uh item number subbullets and item number five, just to just to keep it updated. So no nothing major, and maybe it explains better if you look at this next page that has the map on it. Visiting with FRA and our and our and our the visiting with FRA. You can see it's quite a project. Um, and you see that little white thing that says we are here. That's where we are. It doesn't look it doesn't look as encouraging as it as it really is, but uh below that, the corridor ID program you see extends through the end of this year. And so there are the project development arrow and the project planning. Those are being done right now. And uh, and so FRA was indicating that that there were 69 projects approved. Four of them, four of the corridor ID projects are well in advance stages, and then the other 65 of them are in this process, but we as Kansas and Oklahoma, we are one of the other 65, but we are at the, we are way ahead of the others in the 65 projects. So um what FRA, if I'm quoting correctly, FRA then approaches Congress every February and tells Congress here's the status of our 69 approved projects, and we are going to further fund these five, 10, 12, whatever it is, based on all the activity that goes on um between now and the end of 24. Um, and then KDOT, I've said before, KDOT will be releasing the Service Development Plan, which encompasses these arrows below project planning and project development. They will be releasing that sometime this month in April, and that'll be a public document which will further define the cost, the capital cost and the uh revenue and and operating costs projections. So be glad to know more and will know more as soon as that service development plan comes out. So this is a document from KDOT. And of course, it's got a the Q R L, whatever that's called, up in the corner so you can you can but I know.
Okay, then the next item is the Caskin Creek Watershed Improvements in District Three, Asking to Support Funding for the Caskin Creek Watershed Improvements Project Through a Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Commitments Grant, which is the BRK grant. County has submitted a joint application to City Wichita for the BRK funding.
So you may recall, this is a project that uh uh we've attempted a couple of times for the BRK grant. Um, been unsuccessful. Um, BRK grants have traditionally served more of the east and west coasts um with hurricane type uh infrastructure protection. Um, but they do, it is a federal grant that is eligible for inland states. Um, Wichita just recently has decided to, they've pumped bricks a little bit, and they're looking at trying to find other funding opportunities. Uh, we have left this as a uh a desire for us because this is a $40 million project that we are going to need federal funds to be able to construct that will uh inevitably um actually free up almost, I think it's 500 acres of land uh that's now unbuildable because it's in a floodplain, and I'll actually remove that from a floodplain and make it developable. Um, so it's it's a big uh boon for the northwest part of uh Cedric County and Wichita.
So do you know if Wichita is going to include this in their federal agenda?
I have not heard whether they are or not.
Well, it's a critical need, uh, but if they're not going to include it in their federal agenda, our chance of getting it through, now it's even slimmer than it was before. We probably need to find that out before we can move forward.
Okay, and then the last two items, ARPA Funding Extend Obligation Period by One Year to December 31 of 2025 and Expenditure Period by One Year to December 31, 2027. And then uh, this is always in our platform, which is Funding for County Services uh Fiscal Year 2025 Federal Appropriations. Uh, and that's to support federal programs and fiscal year 2025 appropriations legislation that hands county services provide formula funding and funding competitive federal grants. And then they list uh several programs in agriculture, commerce, justice, and science, interior and environment, homeland security, labor, health, and human services, and education.
I I got a question on the ARPA funding.
Yes, people.
No, you didn't. I just have news.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a question on it.
Yeah.
What kind of conversations are happening on the extension? Is that something that's talked about frequently? Is it something you think is going to happen?
Oh, do I have an update for you that's going to rock your world like it rocked mine? So on Friday afternoon, of course, Treasury Treasury released a new 104 page document. I'm on, or I'm sorry, it's actually 109. I'm on a page 104. Um, it has not changed the obligation date, but it has redefined what obligation means, and it has substantively changed what we knew. And they admit in here, we're changing our guidance.
Is this for the better or the worse?
Uh, it depends on your perspective and what you all want to do. I think it gives us a lot more flexibility, but there's going to need to be a lot of conversation with you all. So the first thing that it changes, now remember, the rules for ARPA say we have to have obligations in place by 123124, and then we can continue to pay on those obligations through 123126. But it all has to be paid out completely by the while this new guidance changes what obligation means. It says you can keep paying for personnel past 123124 as long as the position is created and filled prior to that date. Uh, so that will change a lot of potentially the discussion around decision packages um that have already been submitted by departments before. If you recall, if we changed a uh CIP contract and it increased because of it any any reason, we couldn't cover that as well. The new rules say you can. And in fact, even though you have to obligate it, you can actually set aside an estimated amount of contingency that you think you're going to need. And then if you don't spend it for that, you don't have to give it back to Treasury. You can reallocate it to any eligible expense, which I would point out includes revenue replacement. So this has fundamentally shifted the conversations we've been having about ARPA. And so we are going to have a conversation with um everyone that's in your spin plan. Uh, tomorrow afternoon, we've got a kind of a pseudo webinar scheduled with everyone to give them a heads up and say, how would this change your requests if you could? And then we will bring that back to commissioners because we are slated to bring the next quarterly report to you May 1st. So um, we're going to make it even more of a point in that case that we have to have precise estimates so that we can still try to maximize revenue replacement. Even if the commission does choose to allow some of these positions to continue. Um, so we'll roll both of those things out. So I'm confident that by the end of the month, we'll be able to have a good conversation about how this changes. So I don't know that this is as much of a priority um anymore for us, given the flexibility that's now been added. But that's, I mean, Alda Heard or whatever the commission chooses, but this is, this is huge surprising news.
And do you remind me again how much we have left?
Uh, we have not allocated roughly 18 million. That's sitting in contingency.
And you've already told me this, but uh, remember, I'm old, so.
No comment, sir.
Why can't we just move all of that 18 million over general funds and just forget about when we have to obligate it and so forth? You told me on once, but please remind me.
Well, we we can do that whenever the commission would like. I mean, technically you can. Um, but the challenge becomes we don't know what we don't know. And we still have some of these CIP projects that we're working through where we don't have contracts out all fully executed. And so what we were hoping to do is to do maybe a first bucket of revenue replacement in this upcoming quarterly plan and then save some back just in case. So um, that would be the strategy I probably would continue to recommend to you, but um
But CIP projects run more, and we've got it in general fund. Couldn't we just fund it with the general fund then? Because we just kind of earmark this to that?
We can. There are a few reasons why putting some time pressures on some of these projects is good for us. Um, and so that would be one consideration. Also, the fact that it's in a general fund means that you'll have to grow your budget in the general fund. Um, and I know that sometimes that is not something that uh the commission embraces. So we can have all of these conversations absolutely without a doubt, and we'll do whatever the commission chooses, but we can also talk through that 18 million amount may shrink if the commission says we're going to fund some of these positions through ARPA. We don't want it coming out of the general fund for the next two years um if we want to reallocate it that way. So there's just a lot of, a lot of um conversation I still need with you all to get some direction on what you're all comfortable with.
And with the constraints we've got on our future budgets and and especially that 25 budget that I'm concerned about right now.
Sure.
We've got positions out there that uh we drive in with ARPA funding. But I have very strong concerns about continuing those forever and rolling them into the general fund later on. So we need to get our staff to start thinking about weaning themselves off of those.
And they have for sure.
So we don't have a whole bunch of people that we've hired with ARPA. And and then later on, we're not going to continue to fund those. So I I'd like to start earlier rather than later on getting us off of the ARPA funding.
Okay.
Get the money over into the general fund where we can use. Thank you.
That's a good update. So Tanya, your opinion after hearing that, do you think that we need to continue with this legislative platform? Lindsay, do you think this is something that needs to be in the legislative platform?
Fair enough. Um, but I think the only challenge becomes if we don't think we can have every contract, so mental health hospital, because that's ARPA funds too. So these
Yeah.
this would apply to that as well as this. That would be, I think, the biggest area of concern where I would want to make sure that the commission has that in mind. And I don't know if it's realistic to think we can certainly be on a timeline to have that contract in place, given some of the delays we've seen recently or not. But for our projects, the ones funded with our direct allocation, I think the flexibility that's been put forward in the new FAQs probably alleviate a lot of that concern.
Well, I think the hospital in and of itself, we already knew we were on a tight timeline there. So I think it's relevant to keep this in there. Just that's one of our top projects in this community. So I I would be comfortable leaving it in there simply because of that project and the pressure. Do you guys agree or? Yeah, okay.
I was kind of in the middle of naming those off. I don't know if I need to go through all of it, but um, those are just the programs that uh, you know, keep an eye on for potential grants. So that concludes the federal agenda.
Questions on that?
I just, um, you know, as I look at this as a citizen of this country, what bothers me is it seems like the federal government has no limits. And virtually everything in here is asking them to spend money. I am concerned personally about uh the federal debt. I'm worried about energy independence. I'm worried about border security. There's nothing in here to speak to any of those issues. I think we have too many foreign wars. Uh, do we want to speak to our federal legislators and if if we'll issue any opinions whatsoever on the size and scope of federal government?
I think there's conversations that happen frequently with them and individually on this exact thing and and your concerns are, I think, all of our concerns.
I mean, here's the thing, as long as as long as they're going to be doling out money without regard to the proper role of government, we're going to have our hands out as well. I I don't want to say that we would uh not, you will play the same game that every every other municipality, entire country is playing. But is this good policy? I I think at the end of the day, I I have little faith that our country is going to continue the trajectory we're on right now with $34 trillion in debt. I heard this morning that our interest on the debt is higher than the money we're paying on social security and the military.
It's $2 billion a day.
So it's like, where's it going to stop? We're asking them to spend more money. Do we, is this what we really want to ask them? I just tell them, look, please stop spending money. If you if you're going to spend money, we'll we'll take some money. We'll do some things. But I would rather not do some things. I'd rather have them basically stop what they're doing and reconsider, if you will, the size and scope of federal government. I I am I'm not content to not speak to this. If we're going to have a federal agenda, I'd say to the extent you're going to spend money, here's what we want you guys to do. But I'd really rather have you guys stop spending money. Uh, to me, I feel like we're not even, we're not even addressing that at all. We're simply encouraging them to do more and more and more and actually take local control away more and more transfer response, transfer responsibility from local government to federal government. And we we're going to lose every time because I think we're an exporter of tax dollars. At the end of the day, I I think we're we're putting these amenities and these things we desire on the backs of our great, great grandchildren. If we survive that long, I am very concerned. This federal agenda has no, we don't speak at all to the responsibility of federal government. We're simply saying spend more money, and I don't like it.
Commissioner Dennis, would you?
No, I completely agree with Mr. Howell. We can't continue the binge of spending that we've had, especially over the last four years. Uh, and even before that. So I maybe we need to include the kind of a leading statement in our legislative agenda that um, kind of expresses the concerns the Commissioner Howell had. Uh, but I have another issue that also if you remember when we first started this, we had a lobbyist on uh Zoom with us. And he pretty well said that everything that we had in our legislative agenda wasn't going to happen. So uh, is this uh worth the paper it's printed on right now? If uh, that's the feeling of our of our uh lobbyist. Oh, do we need to go back to our lobbyists and say, is this really dead on arrival? And and if it is, maybe the entire legislative agenda is to say, quit spending.
Tom, what kind of collaboration can we have with Wichita in order to try to make this a more impactful legislative platform?
Yeah, I looked through this. First of all, we can, we can see what their federal platform is too.
I don't, I'm not sure where they're at in their process of ratification, but we can see if there's some sync opportunity. There are projects in here that should be joint Northwest Expressway should be Wichita City County. Should be, we should be partners on that. The uh, Amtrak, we should be partners on Cap Screen Creek Watershed. The two congressional issues at the beginning, I think, have some substance. I think there's. I think there's possibility even in dealing with Moran's appropriations on Arc ninety five. And also the, the E O C project I think is viable. I don't know that that's dead. We're, we're trying to get some monies from Moran through appropriations and then we're going to continue to apply for the federal grant. To make that project come into reality. But I, I don't know that it's. I don't know that everything in here is dead on arrival. I think some things are in better shape than others and we need to continue to fight for. Uh, I will coordinate with Wichita to see what their platform is and, and we should add partnership in here when we can. On the overall general statement. If the commission's will is to put some type of overarching statement in there, I think we should consult with Davenport and see what his suggestion is to do what the commission wants done there. Uh, and put that either at the beginning or at the end of this. I think it's worthwhile. If that's where the commission is at. Uh, to put some type of concerned. Federal spending statement into the platform. We can surely add that, but I'd want to consult with. With obvious on the best and most tactful way to do that.
I think that's worthwhile. I would, I would suggest maybe we limit the complaint to the, the debt. I think it's. I, I appreciate Commissioner House's statement. We're asking for spending and then we say stop spending, I think is challenging. I think if we narrowed our focus to the debt, which is a more encompassing um, statement and challenge that. Um, that's being dealt with. I, I would be supportive of saying, hey, we have significant concerns for our constituent, our local government. Uh, on the, on the continuing rise of the federal debt. Um, I, I would, I would be supportive of a statement of that sort.
Yeah, if I would, I think Tom used the word carefully crafted statement. I think that's important. I. I don't have a sense that uh. That our congressional representatives would be uh offended by that. Not at all. There are some electeds that are offended when, when you make statements and then we're penalized for that. So uh, but in this case, I think it, it warrants uh. Carefully crafted and opening or, or closing statement about.
We'll take it, we'll take a stab.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay with that. I would, to me, there's a, there's a few topics that are so closely related that. I, I think a statement in that direction would be, would be welcome. I think we, we can do that as a front end saying as long as. Long as we do this in a fair and equitable way, I think the end of the day, the entire country would benefit from a policy that's actually embraced by the entire Congress, if you will. It, it goes without saying, I would love to see them have a balanced budget. They haven't, to me, it's been decades since we've had a balanced budget. I, I think we should encourage them to do that. In other words, it just embraces if you are responsibility versus irresponsibility. I don't know why we wouldn't encourage them to do that. If you want to talk about the debt, that's fine. But to me, that's just a, it's a net and the, and the overall discussion of responsible governance. And then right now they're. They're so irresponsible, they don't seem to see any limits whatsoever. I think for us to have some statements that encourages, encourages congressional wide responsibility is a, is a good thing. I was looking at other people's agendas from other municipalities. No one I, I can find. Johnson County, Oklahoma City, you go on, Austin, Texas. No one is actually making statements if you encouraging responsible governance. Everyone is simply saying, give us more. I, I think it'd be refreshing for them to see. Their community, if you will, start a conversation that says we would be supportive of them, them not giving us stuff as long as they do this in a fair and equitable way. I would rather see them do less.
I appreciate that sentiment. I, I, I would want also that our constituents to know that two things can be true at the same time is that. Is that we are very concerned about the debt, the spending level of the federal government, but we also got to be competitive on the local level. And if they are committed to handing out these projects, then we need to get ours. Um, and that's the, that's the balance. That's the tough balance that I want our constituents to know is that, you know, we. We, we don't like the program, but if this is the program, then we need to play to win and we need to be competitive within that program. And that's, that's the, and that's the double edged sword on this deal. So, but I, I would welcome a statement of fiscal responsibility. And I think we could, we'd represent our constituency as well. Oh, I think that wraps up. Thank you, Tanya.
Uh, paid friendly change your.
Okay, good morning. Um, as promised, I'm back six months after we have adopted this policy to give you an update on the usage. So just as a reminder, this policy was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners last September on September sixth. And it provides eight weeks of paid leave for the birth, adoption or foster placement of a child. Today, we've had fifty two employees who have used paid parental leave. Uh, these are the covered employees who are um, underlined. So twenty employees have used paid parental leave. Fourteen of those were for maternity. Six were for the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. So in those cases, they might not have been eligible for a F M L A. And one was used for baby bonding. Thirty one employees have used paid parental leave for a family member. Thirty of those were for baby bonding and one adoption. And then we had one foster care placement. On the flip side of that, we also looked at how many dependents were added on to our health insurance. And you may recall when we presented this in September, we were doing our best guess estimate. On how many people this policy would affect by looking at how many dependents were added to our insurance and how many employees used F M L A. According to our um, insurance plans, we've had thirty nine dependents added to our insurance since September. Twenty employees being the covered employee. And ten of those who used P P L added ten dependents. Of the thirty one family members, sixteen dependents were added. Of the foster care um, usage for P P L that was not added to our health insurance. And then we had thirteen dependents that were added that did not use paid parental leave. Overall, this is what our paid percentage or our paid parental leave usage looks like throughout all the departments we have listed below. So um, quite a range of departments that have used our paid parental leave. This is breaking it down by gender. So uh, what, what amount of females versus males are using paid parental leave? At this time, fifty eight percent of our employees that are using paid parental leave are males. And forty two percent are females. And that is listed males are in the orange and females are in the blue. And you can see how that's broken down then by department. You also, six months ago, asked me to provide feedback from both employees and supervisors. So I sent out a survey to employees who have used paid parental leave and also their supervisors, and I'd like to share some of their feedback. I asked the employees, please describe how the paid parental program impacted you. Some of the responses, I did not put all of them on here, but these are some of them, is I was able to take eight weeks of maternity leave after the birth of my child. It helped me be able to spend more time at home with my daughter and build a better bond with her. It also allowed an appropriate amount of time to recover from giving birth. It came at a perfect time and I took a lot of financial stress after having, away after having my baby. Paid leave was a huge benefit for me and my wife. It greatly improved our quality of life during the challenging newborn phase. The paid parental leave lifted a huge stress off me. If the paid parental leave had not been in place, I would have had to use sick and vacation time that I had saved up. Which would not have been enough to cover the course of my leave. It was a great opportunity for myself and my family, huge benefit for my wife as well. We have four kids and her six years old and was a tremendous help for her. And impacted my mental health in a very positive way, made for an easy and peaceful transition at home for wife and baby. I then asked them, did this program improve your overall satisfaction with the org, organization? And you can see here, uh, there's a lot of yes, it did um, impact my overall satisfaction. So um, I read through the first couple. I will let you read some of those. I'll pull out a few just to read them. You know, it improved the work-life balance and they were able to focus. Allow me to focus on my family during that important time. And yes, I would say that the leave reaffirmed my choice of working for Cedric County and ongoing satisfaction with my job in a major way. So I think that is a very impactful statement coming from our employees. I then asked, if you did not have access to the paid parental leave program, how would you have taken leave? The numbers off to the side indicate the responses. And seven employees said I would have returned to work sooner than eight weeks. Four said that they would have used their sick and or vacation leave and I did not have a response on one. I then asked the supervisor or what was the reaction of your supervisor to taking leave? This was interesting because I wanted to see what the dynamic was in the department. Um, one said that there was mixed feelings, but overall the majority of the responses said that they were supportive. I did the bottom two uh, points. Some responded to leave in a negative way. However, understandably, it added to their workload with staffing and to a degree is counterculture. And just rumors of rude comments, but nothing directly negative. So um, we did have a mix of answers on that. I then asked, what is the overall impact of this program in your department? Um, positive for the morale in the department that it demonstrates, we value our employees. Um, we see that employees were not stressed. The total amount of work completed by the team was reduced while the individual was out. And that's coming from the supervisor's perspective. I also asked the supervisors if they observed any impact on the morale of coworkers when the employee was on leave. That was another issue that we had talked about was how is this going to pack employees when they were out on, or other employees when a certain employee was out for eight weeks? Many of them said there was no, excuse me, no negative impact on morale. Some people seemed happy to be working for an organization that values family and a work-life balance. Some were a little stressed. Um, yes, the workload of everyone still here working is increased even more than usual. No, because they're going to be gone anyway. And we talked a lot about that. Um, and then again, maybe a little bit lower, but not significant. So I appreciated all the feedback that was received. I tried not to overwhelm them with questions and just keep this at a very high level. Coming to you tomorrow, and I had the chance to talk with all commissioners that we do have some policy updates that we will be bringing for, for adoption tomorrow on April third. One of those is clarification of eligibility date versus application date. The intent is to make sure that the employee is covered. Um, when they would be eligible, not so much when they submit the application. Um, clarification on the use of leave intermittent versus continuous. I spoke to you yesterday about how those run concurrently with F M L A. So we want to make sure that we're using those um, in tandem with each other. And then clarification of holiday pay during, during paid parental leave. So again, I spoke with those changes um, with you yesterday about those and, and got everything clarified. But overall, I think we've seen a positive impact of the program. And again, I know I've had a few employees personally reach out to me, but wanted to give you an update on the usage so far. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, you know my question already.
And I breathe Lindsay as well.
What, we've got six months of data. Uh, what does it cost the county for this for the past six months?
So we're actually running the report for that now, and I will be delighted to send that to you as soon as we got in. We'll break it out by department and by fund so that you can see specifically what those dollars are. And we are brainstorming as to how to contrast that with what you would have seen before. The program existed, if folks would have come back sooner. Maybe how, what the average time out was, if we can identify that. So we will, we will try and get creative so that you don't have fuzzy math to work off.
Good. You're still one of my favorite uh, staff members, but you do have fuzzy math sometimes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on page, uh, slide number three. Just looking at some of the weird math here. I don't, I don't understand the math. So we had twenty employees had twenty one. Used P P L. There's twenty, uh, there's twenty one there. It's fourteen maternity, six P W F A, one baby bond is twenty one.
Okay, I, I apologize. I'll double check that.
Okay, so there's that. And then, then I noticed below that thirty one, that does add up and then one foster care. What's odd, again, I mean, you know, I don't, maybe I'm asking too many questions here, but. We had um, that has added up to fifty two. Uh, is, except for that, uh, except for that error at the top. I'm not sure what to make of that. But anyway. Uh, onto, onto the right column, we have twenty employees and ten dependents added. Can, how does it, how, please explain to me how that, again, it's about fifty percent. Twenty employees and ten, ten dependents. How do you explain that?
Of the twenty employees that used paid parental leave for themselves. Only ten of those people added a dependent onto the plan.
Okay, um. So I would write that down, like maybe half them are fathers, half them are mothers type of thing? Or whatever.
No, those would be mothers and they might have added a child on to another plan. They're just not on our plan. I don't, I don't know where they're covered at.
Okay. And then going on down, for example, it says, uh, other thirteen dependents added that did not use P P L. So we're doing the P P L usage chart here and they do not use P P L. Yet there's thirteen listed there. Is this like employees added to the organization that were new to the organization that there, these are not uh, births or babies or. Whatever, not adopt, they're not foster care. These are just. Families added? I mean, I'm not quite sure how to make.
Yeah, it could be, for instance, an employee got married and uh, their spouse had a child and they added them on for. Um, that type of event. I could also say um, Chairman Beatty um, added a dependent on who did not use paid parental leave.
And that dependent did not sleep well last night.
Yeah, there's several different scenarios that could come up, but of, of those additional thirteen that were added on to the plan in these past six months. Their parents did not use paid parental leave.
Okay, so um, it's like we, we added twenty, we had twenty six. Dependents added to insurance that did use P P L. Is that the other way to look at that?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And we're gonna, this is again, a P P L usage report. And we reported that kind of the other way around. I was just trying to try and understand what you're trying to say here. So.
Well, and again, because when we were trying to look at our estimates of how much this would be used, we went off of what the dependents added to the plan. That was one of our factors we looked at. So when I look at, there's about twenty six in this timeframe. That gave us the base number to give a projection off of.
So I don't remember the numbers today. I can kind of guess at what we said before, but I can go back and look at the video if I need to. What were the estimates for this program and how do we line up with the estimates?
About fifty to sixty. So we're well, we're well above where we would be halfway through a year, almost double.
Okay. And all right, I remember I had some concern about that. I guess I'll, I'll wait to see the financial report from Lindsay before I say anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarity. If you have a question, I, I wanted to share also that I spoke at a business event. About two months after we passed this and it was, it was a conservative business event, a Christian business event. We talked about. I shared this as an example of what it means to create pro-life policy. And that it's more than just what we typically talk about in the pro-life movement, that when we talk pro-family, this is very much pro-family. Um, and I'm proud to support this and proud of the pro-family capacity be, behind this. Um, and I think that more organizations, particularly of this size, should lean into the lead that we set here. I think we set a wonderful example for families and I've had people walk up to me at kids' practices that worked for us. And, and, and so this is something that I think from the morale standpoint, reading those surveys, I thought was incredibly telling. And what it does from a morale standpoint. So I, I appreciate that. Um. Do we need to discuss F T Es? I had um, someone from Wichita uh, comment that one of the concerns on the fire side. Was that, and she used P P L as an example, she says, well, because of paid rental leave, we're concerned that fire might not have the staffing to do some of the things that we need them to accomplish. Um, that's just one anecdote, but is this something that we need to have a broader conversation? I see ten that were used for fire. Are we putting ourselves into a compromising position with FTEs?
So I would lean on two different things. The first one that said, our employees are telling us I would have used leave anyway. So they would have been out of the office, and that is protected leave under the FMLA. For the birth or placement or adoption of a child. So that is protected time, and they would have, they're telling us I would have been gone anyway. Specifically addressing the fire department, they are the highest usage of our PPL right now. I would also go to say that that is a younger population. In the fire department that would be eligible for PPL. In addition, they just, and I think I've shared the numbers with you, they have had several births this year, 10, 10 births of family members. But also going along with the fire department, for many years, we've been supportive of them having staff to help with our overall coverage. Because they still take sick and vacation leave as well.
Okay. I think the answer to your question is, yeah, I mean, this is, we rolled a pretty radical new policy, and it has all the benefits that Sheena's described and you have described to some degree. There's, there's a, the significant shift, and you look at fire as an example, it's a male-dominated department. The paradigm shift in this policy is dads are getting family time off. That's the, that's the paradigm shift in this policy. Now, they used, I think historically, a day or two or a week of vacation or sick. As, as Sheena has covered, it is FML eligible, and I think some people use that. But the paradigm shift in this is the fact that in 58% of our usage in the first six months is dads. So it's different, and I know Chief Williams says he, and we worried even rolling into this about public safety, where minimum staffing is a huge part of the equation. And I know Chief has, and Rusty talked a little bit about what Chief Williams has struggled with here. But I, I think, you know, I think overall, I think it's great policy. I've also heard from employees, I've heard from businesses, that this is, when I go to new employer orientation, which I did yesterday, we talk about this. As a family-friendly organization, this is the family-friendliest policy in the state of Kansas. And we brag on that, but it doesn't come without cost. And it doesn't come without sacrifice from other employees. And let me, let's kind of talk about what the chief is struggling with.
So if you remember, last year, the chief came in and asked for permission to submit for a safer grant in order to hire nine employees for three years. See if that relieved his overtime stress. Because historically, we have, we have efficient, pretty efficient departments and organizations. Generally, when you're trying to staff 24 hours, 7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. You figure a factor of like 1.3 employees per position. In order to have extra people to fill for military leave, sick leave, vacation leave, holidays, all those things that take people away from work. And historically, we have not had that in any, we've not had that in county fire. I don't know how close the sheriff is, but he has open positions in the jail. Nonetheless, fire has felt stressed, particularly through the summer months, whenever they try to give their employees time off, to spend time with family. For work-life balance. That's why the chief came last year. With the parental leave policy that added additional stress to their staffing. They had, didn't have adequate staffing to cover those types of leaves before. So the chief will tell you that paid parental leave took employees who didn't say, oh geez, the organization comes first and I'm staying here because momma can take care of the baby. He had 10 firefighters who said, I want to spend time with my child in the county, the organization's provided an opportunity. So they appreciated the opportunity, they took the leave, they used overtime to backfill, or they ran open positions. He's going to come back, he's going to come back to talk to you guys in the next few days about applying for that safer grant again. For the same nine positions he asked for last year, which he believes will offset again, the lack of lack of staffing to cover those vacancies for all those different types of leave, which now includes paid parental leave. He's going to come back and ask for that again, and he'll show you the math where he thinks it will cover the bulk of that overtime that's used to backfill positions that are vacant because of leave. And it will relieve some of the stress that he felt from this paid leave. But he will tell you that paid parental leave added to the stress that already, that already existed.
But he has told me, yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's helpful analysis. Would you be able to, Sheena, and this is not an urgent request, but one of the things we talk about, and I've heard Commissioner House say before, and he's spot on, that it's hard to quantify what our benefits packages are here at the county. When I would talk, when I first got here and I talked to some of the people that had tenure for 20, 25 years, and I'd ask them, you know, not compensation may not be where you want from a wage, but why did you stay? And almost unanimously, many of these people talk about the benefits packages that we have at the county, and they are attractive and they are good. Is there a way to quantify that? That's my first question. But number two, could you get me a list of the benefits that we do have here and how it compares maybe? I don't, I'm not saying a direct comparison to the city of Wichita, but that's our largest comp, so our most equal comp. I would be curious, because that is something that I think we should be proud of, is that we do have a benefits package here that is aggressive.
We, we are having a compensation workshop in May, and I think we ought to highlight that as part of that. We can get you some list in between now and then, but I think that that becomes a major discussion in the compensation workshop discussion. This, I would also mention that when we adopted this policy, we, we have to take this as a long view. Let's, this is a six-month report out, I would hope that we come back and do a one-year report out when we hit the annual. But this was a long haul policy discussion, and we adopted it at such a time that we knew when our staffing maybe was not 100% where it should be. Our, I think our staffing, and we'll talk about this during the budget retreat, as during budget process, staffing's better than it was two years ago, still not maybe where we want it. But this was a long haul policy type of adoption to set a cultural theme for the organization that will take time to show positive, so.
You have other questions on paid parental?
This is just more of a comment. Again, my, my position earlier on was to, to stage into this. I agree with your comments earlier, Chairman, but I, you know, the idea of, of, you know, starting this something less than eight weeks and seeing how response would be and kind of ease into something we can afford. I think going backwards is impossible. Quick math, since there's 52 employees have used PPL and they had eight weeks each, that's roughly the same as eight man years if we're employee years of salary over six months. If you extrapolate that over the year, it's 16 employees. And if you take an average salary of $50,000 per employee, it's about $800,000 if you add in benefits, you're looking at about $1 million. So we're about a million dollar program to do this. And we don't know whether or not, again, this kind of came out of nowhere, a lot of employees, I think, were maybe surprised that we'd be with this direction. We might see some employees actually making decisions to enlarge your family, which is a good thing. Because of the, because of the policy potentially, so it might be higher than that at some point. A point is, I guess, you know, we look at a million dollar wage obligation, roughly 1%. I'm not sure if that's even accurate any longer, but it used to be about $1 million per year was about a 1% raise for the organization. It probably isn't that any longer, I guess it's not even close, probably, much higher, one and a half probably. Four and a half, so one of my goals has always been to get the wages up for all of our employees. Again, these types of programs, it does create a lot of, a lot of reasons to stay with Cedric County. Especially if you're a family that's growing, your family, this may be a really good reason to stay here. I don't know how many of our employees actually get to benefit from this, and we talked about 52, but we have 3,000 employees, we have 52. That enjoyed, you know, they get to enjoy the benefit, and we have the rest of them on not getting this benefit, whereas they met, potentially we got some type of increase in their salary. So we have to be very careful not to to focus, I think, on, on benefits that, that helps maybe a few employees over what we can do to help every employee with wages in their paycheck. Number one goal for me is to get the salaries up for every employee. So that's one of my reasons for being reluctant to, to support this the way that, the way this started out. Again, not suggesting it's a bad program, I'm just not sure we can ever go backwards at this point. Now, we've started an eight-week program, it's going to stay there eight weeks, and so it is what it is at this point.
Yep. Thank you.
Hey, anything else for Sheena?
Thank you, Sheena.
Last topic, and this is really not a topic, this is a precursor to the Thursday en banc. I think that the conversation, Chairman made it, we wanted to start en bancs again with a makeup of three new city council members. A new, a new commissioner, we haven't had an en banc for quite some time, so we wanted to throw an en banc together early spring here, followed up by potentially maybe two more this year, and tackle topics within those en bancs that affect both government structures. So for Thursday, where we landed on, Chairman can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but Thursday, I think the theme and topic is ways to find efficiencies between governments and reform and different kinds of business processes. It starts off, we'll give a history of things that we have done, city and county together over the years, over the decades. That's everything from big ditch management all the way to EMCU and MAPD and MABCD and 911 Dispatch and Regional Forensic Science Center, on and on it goes. It's quite a list when you start looking at it of functional consolidations, mergers, working together partnership. Well, the second topic will then be, we'll resurrect the 2021 discussion we had on Park Culture Rec. Be a high-level review of that, to hear the conversation from city council and that, that it's changed face a little bit, and anything from commissioners. And then the last part is this kind of an open discussion of what else maybe is out there? What else is out there in the way of functional consolidation? What else is out there in the way of reform? And just have a kind of a free speech time for the 12 electeds in the room to talk openly about what we see going forward. That's how I see Thursday going, we're going to try to time it at 90 minutes, may go over a bit, may go under a bit, but we'll, we'll plan on that. And Commissioner House shaking heads, clearly it must be under 90 minutes then, right? You're, you're thinking we've, it's, it'll be, I, I think it's an interesting discussion for staff to hear from our current electeds. So I think, I hope it's a good session, but that's kind of the plan going forward.
Yeah, I, I, a couple of thoughts to add to that, and I appreciate that summary. I think you know that the part of what the conversation is on areas that we are already working together, I think we need to have an honest and civil conversation about what's working well and what's not working well in ways that we can shore that up. And I think that only happens through communication and candid conversation, civil, good conversation, but candid conversation. And then the opportunity that some of the low-hanging fruit, other opportunities that are out there, obviously, they want to talk about parks and rec. That's a big conversation. And that'll be, and there was already work before I got here, obviously, you discussed some of these things before. And I would love to steer that conversation as to what an easy methodology would look like with that, but also a bigger picture. Potentially trying to get creative and what that could look like. No decision's going to be made in this, this is just for conversation. And then lastly, the third agenda item on the day really is what else could be? We've talked a lot about the need for what modernizing and reform looks like. We talked about it in our budget, our first budget workshop that we had. There's, there's two more that, that Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Ballard, Portemp Lopez and myself have talked about. They originally wanted to start off with homelessness and have the conversation around, hey, what, what is everybody's role going to look like? We obviously know and I've communicated what our role through comm care and substance use and mental health, what that looks like. But really trying to get some more specifics about what, who's doing what in this grander scheme. The decision is made to back that up because nobody really knows how the homelessness ecosystem is really playing out. We are waiting on the state, their MAC project, so that's going to be probably the second, maybe the third. And then there's been another conversation about the public safety ecosystem and an en banc discussion about what that looks like and how we can get upstream. We have a sheriff and we have a police chief that are going around in public events, talking about the need to reform, that we can't lock ourselves up out of this, we can't arrest our ways out of these problems. And, and I think having them in the room to have a broad discussion of what it looks like through substance use, what's going on in the drug situation, the retail crime, all of these things. One of the greatest meetings I think we ever had here was when we had the, the public safety roundtable discussion, and we had all those people sitting in this room. That was a fascinating meeting, and I think we want to kind of duplicate that with the city of Wichita and have a bigger conversation. So those are the practical things. I would just tell you that I think on my end, symbolically, I think our citizens seeing the city and the county sitting in the room, talking about big issues, symbolically is equally important to me than practically what comes out of it. Is I think that our community needs to see us in the room, much like we've done with legislative roundtables, they need to see government collaborating and working together and talking about big topics. And I think that's equally for me, part of the reasons why I want to be an advocate for these en bancs, so. Any specific questions about this one coming up on Thursday?
I think the conversation is, is interesting. You know, one of the reasons that I guess, a point, a point that I made years ago, we talked about support for the Wichita Arts Commission. Was that, you know, Wichita has an arts commission called Wichita Arts Commission, but there may be arts programs elsewhere in the county. You know, I don't know what Derby does for arts necessarily, but I'm sure they do art stuff because they have a number of things they, in the community, I would argue, very much art-based initiatives, if you will. Every city, I assume, does similar things, cities do libraries, we don't tend to do libraries. Cities do, City Parks Derby, for example, has a dozen really beautiful parks. Wichita has many, many more than that. If we're going to get involved in trying to merge, if you will, city and county on, on something like parks, for example. It leaves me, it leaves me to wonder, what about all the other cities around the community that are not getting that type of partnership? We're taking tax dollars from Derbyites, for example, and funding Wichita parks, I find that to be a bit of a problem. I'm not sure there's actually any efficiencies also, so there's reasons why I don't know that that actually makes sense on the surface. There may be some things we can do that are mergers of, you know, partnerships between city and county, where we're providing some type of service. Or it might make some sense, but I'm not sure that Park and Rec even makes sense at all, even on the surface.
Well, I think, if I may, that would be a conversation that we have on Thursday, and I think that, that needs to be. But I would tell you that I spoke to May City Council last night, and the Park City City Council has done the same thing, is when I start talking about these opportunities, they say, well, how can we play? Is that it's, you know, there's 20 cities in Sedgway County, and we want to be a part. So there's low-hanging fruit, easy, Wichita, Sedgway County, but I would love to have the conversation about a community collaboration around parks and rec and what that looks like, and the funding mechanism to do it, which I think I've been pretty public in saying I don't like the property taxes fund these things. So I, I would love to be creative and have a conversation about how everybody can play a part in this.
And there are some things that are exclusively set aside to one government, for example, 911 is a countywide service, and I think we all understand the efficiency and the, and the coordination that happens because we have county-wide 911. There has been some dissatisfaction by some of the cities. I don't know that that's fair, but that, but that is duly noted. There's, there's been some discussion of duplicating services because of their dissatisfaction, to me, that's going the other way. And so, you know, we, we have focused a lot of our energy on mental health. And rather than recognizing our, our, our dedication and acceptance of responsibility on the issues of mental health, there's been some efforts by the city to kind of duplicate that. Likewise, I view homelessness, again, not saying it's not important in Cedric County, because it certainly is. But many cities are, many cities have homelessness initiatives, which does a, you know, they're doing their very best to, to address this. I'm not so sure that this is something that the county, you know, I'm not sure a partnership of city and county makes sense. Because then you get an issue of double taxation. You know, the, I think, I think it either belongs wholly as a county service or belongs wholly as, you know, city services that are, you know, if you will, created independently, each city has their own program, so to speak. But the idea of having partnerships is not necessarily a model I would support in many cases because of double taxation. And I think also it's unfair for other cities outside of Wichita to not have the same, same consideration, this is, this is county-wide. And one of the other problems I have with this is, is there's a reluctance to hand things over to the county. Because we will charge taxpayer dollars to support those services. And there's an issue of cities that like to have control of, of what, what's happening in the service. So unless they're willing to hand it over to the county, again, I think the idea of consolidated government is very interesting, it's a very good topic. But the idea of consolidation is not a merger of partnerships, it's not a partnership. It's not duplication of services, not where city and county are both doing the same thing.
Sure.
Maybe it's handing over to the county and trusting the county to provide the service like we did with 911 or EMS or other emergency management, for example, the city doesn't need to have emergency management, we do it for them, right? There's, there's reasons why it belongs at the county level. But this idea on the surface is a discussion about mergers or creating it for the city and the county. There's a lot of issues why I don't know that that's a good model to follow. I'm not sure it's more efficient, in many, many cases, it seems like it's maybe less efficient. One more thing I'd say is Wyandotte County is always our example. Wyandotte County is a very urban county.
Yeah, different.
And it's a much smaller, it's 160,000 people versus 526,000 people here. And they have three cities, one of which is like 4,000 people. We have 20 cities. Uh, we have twenty cities. Um, we are seventy percent rural, uh, thirty percent urban. I think maybe it's maybe off a little bit right now. We're so much different than Wyandotte County, and when they did merge to have unified government, I don't think it became more efficient and less expensive, better services than the taxpayer. In fact, the opposite's true. I believe they came, they came less efficient, more expensive. They grew the government. I don't think it actually worked in their favor. Um, so again, there, that's our example. We ought to be very careful to you, to think that that necessarily brings, if you will, the better services, less cost to the taxpayer, that, uh, that people might assume that did.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and by no stretch of imagination, I'm wanting to do anything that Wyandotte is doing, and I don't think anybody in the room, but there are some people actually in the room that actually believe in a consolidated government. I'm not one of those. Um, we'll have the homelessness conversation, but there has to be a partnership in homelessness because we have comcare, and they don't have comcare, and we do the mental health and substance use component, and any ecosystem in homelessness that doesn't have mental health and substance use is a failed ecosystem. So there has to be some partnerships there, and that's what this is for up Thursday, and you're gonna have the capacity in the space on Thursday to share your thoughts with the world. They'll all be watching. There'll be media there to tell us our constituents what we envision a modernized local government looks like. Um, and then we'll be able to state the case if we think status quo is gonna continue to be sustainable in the future, and that's a conversation we have to have, and our constituents deserve us to have that conversation. So I'm looking forward to it, and I think it'll be a healthy exercise and, um, and a healthy en banc. So I appreciate everybody taking part in it on Thursday. I think we're done. Oh, no, we're not done.
No, I still got one question.
Oh.
Uh, at our, uh, last board meeting, we had some, uh, folks come in talking about, uh, burying the dead. And, uh, I asked for a staff meeting on that, uh. There was also a recent editorial in the Wichita Eagle, uh, that this issue is growing across the entire nation. It's not just limited to Sedgwick County. So, uh, I, I don't want to say that we're gonna continue warehousing a bunch of people that we've cremated. Uh, we need, we need, uh, a solution to that. Uh, we also, uh, have to figure out what to do with the possessions, because from what I understand, we can't just, uh, uh, throw their possessions away or sell them or something else, uh, that they're, uh, statutes and so forth, uh, that are in place. So we need to work through that and maybe even have to get it on our next legislative agenda for the state to, to try and work through it. But, uh, I hope that we start looking at this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, yes, that's on the radar to pick back up that conversation. I need some, need to get some research done, and I need to talk with our legal counsel about that, so. We'll get something, whether you want a staff meeting or whatever, we'll get something on the calendar in the near future.
I think, I think it starts with a staff, but I do agree with your endgame that I think it's gonna be something for the state of Kansas here too. It's gonna have to come back on a panel next year, but we will staff it before then.
The number of, the number of people who are passing, um, be they unhoused or just people who live alone and don't have immediate family who, and societal norms and preferences have obviously shifted to where not everyone believes that Christian burial is the necessity once a person passes. There's a lot of things culturally and soc- socially that are going on that are causing increase, but our numbers have more than doubled over the past few years of unplanned bodies. People who are willing to let us take care of the final disposition of their, of their loved one, or the person who passed, so. Uh, give me a little time to do some additional research. We've talked about this a couple of times. We've done research previously. Let me update, and then we'll come back and hopefully have a.
Thank you. Rusty and I have talked about this, uh, and I know there's a lot of issues. Uh, we've got some of the information about the people that we've cremated that are in the salt mines. Uh, uh, we need to bring some of that back, uh, and start figuring out exactly what we've got, uh, and, uh, getting some kind of, uh, an accounting that we can look at to, to find out exactly where we're at and what we need to go for the future. So there, there's a lot of issues that we need to look at, but, uh, we need to start working those issues rather than just saying, yeah, it's a problem.
It's good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Kelly, anything? Okay, he's good. Um, is there a birthday today? It's Sheena's birthday, isn't it? I thought I saw that. Happy birthday, Sheena. Okay, I think we're good. We'll see you tomorrow morning, nine AM. Appreciate everybody.